Good morning. I'd like to call to order the Pasco County Board of County Commission, 10 o'clock a.m. meeting of March 22, 2022. At this time, please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones if you're online. Please rise for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. O merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
District Two, Commissioner Moore.
Here.
District Four, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Here.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District Three, Chairman Starkey.
Here. Now is the time for public comment. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda item coming before the Board and on other business under the Board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those who are here in person. Then we will take public comment from those who have pre-registered for WebEx link and are currently on cue. We request that when you address the Board, comments are not directed personally against the Commissioner or team member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between Board members and the public. After stating your name and address for the clerk, a three-minute timer will be activated. After two minutes, a single beep will indicate you have one minute left. When your time is up, two beeps will sound, and you should close your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected automatically when their time is up. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have four individuals signed up. I will call your name in order. First one is Costas Tistaktis. Okay. Pastor Troy Peterson, Pastor Danny Fields, and then Nick Zumas. Thank you. You may proceed.
Good morning. My name is Costas Tistaktis. I live up the street at 8841 Crescent Forest Boulevard. I was here about 10 months ago, and I was here again, you know, a couple times throughout the summer. We still have an issue up there in regards to the light that was promised to us of Ross Lane and Little Road. You had said, you know, it was different, you know, individuals up here, but you have promised us a light in order for those, you know, go there. You have promised us all kinds of sidewalks that they never, you know, happened. Right now, you have closed access of Ross Lane. We had numerous accidents. We're still having a lot of issues. For an engineer, you know, telling us that a 45-degree, you know, turn is more dangerous than a 180. It has become crazy. So please, I would like you to make, finally, talk amongst yourselves and make something happen there. We don't want anybody dying. We don't want anybody getting killed up there. It's a very dangerous kind of a situation, and before you give a lot of projects out to be developed there, you have to do an evaluation of Ross Lane. There's no other way of going out, but we definitely need a light. I'll appreciate it, and I ask for, you know, for your help in voting on the matter. Thank you.
Uh, next. You may proceed.
I have some flyers I'd like to...
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We all say aye.
Good morning. Troy Peterson, 8114 Leo Kidd Road, Port Ritchie, Florida. That's Light of the World Tabernacle. I'm one of the pastors for Somebody Cares Tampa, Hernando. Thank you for your time. I've handed our Easter in the Park, where we've teamed up with the city of Port Ritchie to do Easter egg hunt every year. And Pastor Danny's going to share a little bit more about that. But I just kind of wanted to share from my heart this morning. We've been coming here for a little while, and I just believe wholeheartedly that the commissioners here really want to see Pasco County great. I see that. I see that in your actions and in your work. And I even hear commissioners say that. They want to see Pasco County really great. I know wholeheartedly, the way to make Pasco County great is to honor Jesus Christ in our invocation. And that's what God has called me here to do. And that's why I've been coming. And there are pastors even right now praying for us. We went there first. They sent us out. They're praying. And we're in a season now with the 40 days of prayer. And I handed you guys the prayer guides, you know, last time. And so, you know, if my people are called by my name, that's us Christians, would humble ourselves and pray. And if we would turn from our own evil and wicked ways, then God will heal our land. And we know our land needs a lot of healing. We have five events within the city of Port Ritchie where the city has actually asked us to put on events in the park. There's five each year. And so, we turn in a permit at the beginning of the year for all them events. Even the Christmas toy giveaway in the park, in Waterfront Park, you know, the fire department gives us all the toys, and we distribute it out to the kids, and we share Jesus, the true meaning of Christmas. So I would encourage you guys, I don't know how I need to do it, make a motion or whatever, to have the Somebody Cares pastors come in and lead the invocation, because we're doing it in the city of Port Ritchie, okay? We're doing it there. And because of that reason, God is blessing this city. You know, the word says that if you deny Me being Jesus Christ before men, I will deny you before the Father. That's a harsh word coming straight out of the mouth of Jesus Christ. And we know the word says the only way to the Father is through the Son. So if we want God to bless Pasco County, we need to be acknowledging Him in the invocation. Thank you for your time.
Okay. My name is Pastor Danny Fields. My address is 7430 Gimbel Lane, Newport Ritchie. The zip area is 34653. And Troy already talked about that. But you guys has got stuff on an agenda that I would like to pray into, so I'm going to do that. And I thank you for your service, number one, and I appreciate you. We are Somebody Who Cares, Pasco County. We know you care like what Troy was talking about. So I'm just going to open it up in prayer. So the great Creator, God Almighty, we just thank you in the precious name of Jesus that we could come and ask for Your wisdom. And we do say, in God we trust, one nation under God. And we say that in the precious name of Jesus. So we just thank you for this panel of leaders that you got here, that they've already had to make decisions. And they've made good decisions for the community, for the state of Florida, for this county, for the residents, and Lord, and all the stuff that they've already done in dealing with the homeless. Lord, I've seen improvement there, and I thank you for that wisdom that you've given them. I thank you for them working together as a team and working with us and us working with them. So we thank you for that. And I just say that in the precious name of Jesus. And for all the Board members here and everybody here. So I just thank you for that, Father, in Jesus' name. And so, that 40 days of prayer that we're doing for the city, it's talking about, and you guys are going to be doing a R55 for the community development, dealing with homeless and stuff like that. We get to deal with that a lot as well and to help in them areas. And so, in our prayer book here, it is talking about seeking God in behalf of the orphans. And we know we got a lot of people that are on drugs, that need resources and stuff, that some of the stuff we went through, it has been there to deal with that. But sometimes, like, we know a woman we just helped that was homeless. She works. She's a nurse, and she has a daughter. And then we got to help place her at refuge to help her to get back on her feet because she was in an abusive relationship. And through that, through Somebody Cares and through getting people off the streets, we had a resource to help. And I thank you that you recognize that with us as Somebody Cares, as we recognize your job. And so, it says here in Psalms 110:17, "You have heard the desires of the humble, and you will strengthen their hearts." Well, that's our hearts. We're humbling ourselves, but we're leaders, and we're bold to do the things that we're called to do. So I just want to thank you. And for all the decisions you guys have to make today, I thank you for that and that you'll continue to do the good work, in Jesus' name. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last individual signed up, Nick Zumas.
Good morning, Commissioners. P.O. Box 601, Odessa, Florida. Nick Zumas here today representing St. Petersburg College to talk about electric vehicle policy. First of all, I want to say that I am Pasco proud. I want to thank the entire commission and the county staff for exhibiting the highest of ethical judgments for our county business. So I'm here to talk about electric vehicles. Did you know that in 1836, the first EV was made? It was a single-person electric carriage. In 1910, steam-engine cars, gasoline cars, and electric vehicles were all on the road at the same time, and EVs had 38% of the market share in 1910. Today, EVs have 2% or less of market share, but that number is growing. Florida is the second-biggest state in the entire country for the EV market, but the majority of Florida's governments do not have any official EV policy. I sent a survey on EV policy to 65 counties and cities around the state. I received 19 responses. Pasco did not respond. Of the 19 respondents, only three said that they have any official EV policy on the books. I must recommend that Pasco County move to draft and implement electric vehicle policy. Regulation is necessary for charging stations, zoning, and use, parking, signage, accessibility, and future development. A permitting process for electric vehicle chargers needs to be streamlined and efficient. The comprehensive plan needs to be updated to include EVs. Battery cars can catch fire, by the way, and they can explode. They're very hard to put out. Fire rescue and EMS needs to update their training and response guides to account for the hazards of EVs. During hurricane evacuations, crisis scenarios, EV drivers will need government support to be able to charge their cars if the power's out. Battery recycling for EVs, that's a developing field, and it's an important field. There's many perspectives to think about when it comes to EVs, especially battery recycling, and the county can make recycling a part of its waste management plan. Gas cars are not going extinct. They're not going anywhere. But electric vehicles are here, and we need to regulate. We need some policy on this issue. So I thank you for your time, Commissioners.
Do we have anyone else signed up here? No one else has signed up.
Somebody's got an name, right?
Okay, come on up, Mitch.
My name is Mitchell Coburnick, 5001 South Shore. I want to speak today on behalf of Diane Coburnick, who is out of town. So she just asked me to say, give her opinion about a couple of things. Last month, the Board passed an MSBU for the Gulf Harbors Golf Course, which has been a long time coming. Diane spoke last month at that meeting and said that she was willing to drop her lawsuit and accepted the terms of the new MSBU, provided one condition, and that condition being that the MSBU be phrased, or that settlement be phrased in such a way that the MSBU would be honored in the future. Just to refresh your memories real quick, this MSBU was designed so that the Gulf Harbors residents would pay for half the purchase of the golf course and would pay for all the future maintenance on that half. And in return, there were certain promises made by the county and the MSBU that would give the Gulf Harbors residents the rights for use of that portion of the golf course. That's fine. As I said, the new MSBU, which was a big improvement over the one passed in 2016, contained a lot of good things that Diane was now willing to sign off on, was willing to accept, and was willing to dismiss her lawsuit. Again, providing that the county honor its word and honor the terms of the MSBU. That only makes sense. If we're paying for it and paying for it going forward in the future, it would only make sense that we would expect the county to live up to its end of the bargain and honor the terms of the MSBU. That's just, you know, standard business logic. If you pay for something, you expect to get the benefit of the bargain. Unfortunately, Diane wanted me to convey to you that the current settlement talks that are in process now to dismiss the old MSBU contains language that not only does the county not promise to live up to the terms of the MSBU in the future, but there's actually, the county attorney put language in there specifically that says that the Board in the future does not have to honor the terms of the MSBU. It allows the MSBU to be changed. So basically, that's saying that we're paying for it. We're paying for it in the future, but in the future, the county is not obligated to live up to the terms of the MSBU and live up to the terms of its side of the bargain. That, I don't know about you, but that just doesn't seem to make, that's just not the way to do business. If we pay for something, we should have the benefit of the bargain going forward. But the current settlement agreement that the county attorney proposed negates that and says that, in fact, we do not have the benefit of the bargain that in the future that MSBU could be changed, and we will not end up getting what we paid for.
Thank you, Mitch. I'm going to have the county attorney respond.
All right. Thank you very much.
Members of the Board, as you are aware, there is a constitutional prohibition for you binding future boards, and that's what the dispute is about. We have said to Mr. Coburnick's lawyer that basically you can't enter into a contract that binds future boards. It is an ordinance. It would require whatever board was in place at the time to bring it up at a public hearing for any changes to be made to that, just like any of your other ordinances. So it's sort of much ado about nothing. It's a, I mean, it's a prohibition that you can't enter into, that they're demanding, and it's something that really doesn't give them any more protection than they've got currently.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
And we have a Citizens Committee made up the residents of the community
Right.
that are going to be overseeing this every step of the way.
Right. And you know, I have not commented a whole lot on the lawsuit, or I don't think I have publicly or anything, but I'm just going to say that I believe, I've not talked to their attorney, but I believe their attorney knows that we can't do this. So why this keeps going round and round? Maybe the attorney isn't speaking, maybe he's speaking lawyer speak, and they're not getting it, but we cannot do that legally. We cannot do what they're asking. So if they want to sue again, that's okay. That's their right to sue all they want, but we'll go ahead with our Citizens Advisory Committee. We're going to go ahead with the cleanup. Actually, they're doing a cleanup of that park today. And, you know, I, what can I say? Anybody can sue anybody. Okay. Do we have anybody online?
Two people have signed up, but they are not online.
Okay. Then we will, does anyone here, else here wish to speak to the Board? We will move on to the poll list. And I see one, C47. Board members, is there anything else that you would like to poll?
Move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? opposed? Great. Okay. We are now on R...
R.
Fifty-three.
RS1.
Oh, sorry, RS1, that's right. It doesn't go in order in my book. I've got to get to my little sheet here.
Is anyone here for Bicycle Month?
You don't have to go over there.
Yes.
Please come up to the podium.
Tina, you're not here for Bicycle Month?
Bicycle Month. We got other people. They're just showing.
Come on, come on up, all you BPAC members. Gunther was just riding at my house this morning, so too bad. I'm not even sure he knew about this. So he could have driven up here.
Y'all riding your bicycle over here today?
We did not ride today. I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm so sorry. Okay. We're going to read the proclamation. Okay.
Resolution. Resolution number 22-090, resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring March as Bicycle Month in Pasco County. Whereas National Bicycle Month was established in 1956 by the League of American Bicyclists. The League hoped to showcase the benefits of cycling to promote individual and community well-being. And whereas in 2019, Florida was named the 10th most bicycle-friendly state in America by the League of American Bicyclists, and Florida ranked in the League's Infrastructure and Fundings category, reflecting a strong statewide commitment to building a safe bicycle structure. And whereas the recognition of the Florida Bicycle Month will raise awareness of bicycling and ultimately promote physical activity and healthy lifestyles by evaluating, by elevating bicycling in a more widely-accepted choice of transportation. And whereas Florida Bicycle Month features a number of fitness opportunities for riders of all ages to enjoy throughout the month at various parks and locations throughout Pasco County. And whereas Pasco County residents and visitors engage in bicycling as a variable and environmentally-conscious form of transportation and an excellent form of physical activity and recreation. And whereas bicycling benefits all citizens of the county by improving air quality, reducing traffic congestion and noise, and decreasing the use of finite energy sources. And whereas the Florida Department of Transportation and our local agencies have adopted complete street goals and policies to develop a multimodal transportation system to support pedestrians and bicyclists while prioritizing safety, accessibility, and mobility. And whereas Pasco County Board of County Commissioners encourages all citizens to ride their bicycles to work, to the store, to the park, and around their neighborhoods this month. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said Board hereby declares the month of March as Bicycle Month in Pasco County and encourages all Pasco County residents to ride their bicycles this month. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 22nd day of March 2022.
Move, approval? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good morning. Good morning. Great to see you guys here. I'm sorry I'm going to miss the BPAC meeting tonight, but it is my 30th wedding anniversary, so that's trumping you guys.
Thank you.
Go ahead and speak to the Board.
I'm Randy Stovall, BPAC chairman, and I would just say that I think the status of bicycling and bike riding in our county is good today. A lot of good progress is being made. More trails are being developed. We're having discussions about widening those sides or shoulders on the roads and the places where people ride. So we're moving in a good direction. So thank you.
Thank you. And yesterday, we had Sebastian in from Germany, who we met on our trip. And I guess the PEDC folks drove him around some of our communities. And his first comment to me was, wow, I cannot believe all these wonderful trails that you're building here. So, I mean, he noticed right away how we were focused on bike trails, and he thought it was absolutely wonderful. So they have trails all over Europe. They don't go along the side of the road, though. They go along the road. They're not smushed up like ours, but then they go through the countryside. Anyway, that's my own beef. So I am very excited to give you guys these parchments. We'll come down and take a picture. I don't know why Tina isn't up here, but we'll come down and take a picture. Board members? Y'all have to ride your bikes this month.
I don't have one.
I can lend you one. I got four. You can use my electric.
I do. I have pedal a bit. I can go up mountains and train. Okay. I'll get that to you. I'll get that to you guys.
All right. One, two, three.
Thank you.
We have to organize a ride next year for Bike Month, okay?
Got it.
Oh, Dixity. Well, that's, yeah, that's how it is.
That's probably.
But I'm glad you did.
You ride bikes? You ride bikes?
I do.
You got a stationary bike?
All right, next.
All right. Next is celebrating the Chasco Fiesta 100th anniversary. If you are here, please, all right, come to the podium.
Wow, that's amazing.
Isn't it? Okay.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning. Good morning. Resolution number 22-089, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, recognizing the 100th anniversary of the Chasco Fiesta. Whereas the Chasco Fiesta began in 1922 and was headed by Postmaster Gerben de Vries as a way for residents to raise money for their local liberty, local library. And whereas de Vries was inspired by the Native Americans in the area and the nearby Pitla, huh, can someone help me with that river's name? Pitla Chascote. Thank you. Pitla Chascote River, which loans its name to the two central characters of the festival, King Pitla and Queen Chasco. And whereas since its inaugural year, the Chasco Fiesta has become a 501(c)(4) organization. And in 2019, the proceeds from the festival benefited 20 not-for-profit organizations in the local and surrounding communities. And whereas this year, during the week of March 25, 2022, through April 3, 2022, the Chasco Fiesta celebrates its 100th anniversary, making it the oldest annual festival in Florida. And whereas the Chasco Fiesta hosts numerous daytime activities, including the third-largest street parade in the state of Florida, the second-longest-running boat parade in the state, a car show, a softball tournament, a 5K run, a coordination ball, a carnival, and food vendors. Every night of the festival features performances by different musical acts in Sims Park. And whereas the driving forces behind the Chasco Fiesta are the sponsors and over 700 volunteers who work tirelessly to create a fun and memorable experience for every attendee, including a steering committee who oversees the year-round planning and organization of the Chasco Fiesta. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County in regular session duly assembled, that said Board hereby congratulates the Chasco Fiesta on its 100th anniversary in beautiful downtown Newport Ritchie and encourages all residents to visit one of our city's greatest events. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting the 22nd day of March 2022.
Move, approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Good morning.
Good morning, and happy anniversary, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, we are excited. Chasco's been away a few years. We're expecting over 200,000 people to be participating. Kicks off with the Native American Festival on Friday night. The whole week, 10 days, is full of activities, and it's buzzing in the park. I'm the representative today because everybody else is working in the park and doing other things. We have a completely volunteer steering committee. There's 10 of us. Kami Austin is our chairperson, and they're working really, really hard. And along with them is obviously the other volunteers that are going to help us put this event on. So we're very excited. We do anticipate record crowds, and hopefully the weather will be as beautiful as it has been lately because we're excited about it.
I cannot believe that the 100-year date, that it's the oldest Fiesta celebration in the state. That's amazing. Very cool. And it looks like you're going to have perfect weather.
I'm hoping.
Who's, is this yours? Okay, go ahead, Chris.
I'm very excited. Thank you for...
Thank you for being here today, and I want to say thank you to all the volunteers that helped make this possible. I've been attending this for thirty-three years since I've been here. My mom's brought me, and from watching the parade, watching the boat parades every year. So, it's a very exciting event, and I would like to encourage everyone to come out on Saturday for the street parade and then the boat parade the following weekend. They have the golf tournament coming up and many more events in the Bowl-a-thon as well, so thank you again.
Okay, you wanna all go down and, whoops, got it.
Yeah, she's got it. This is the C one. Oh, okay.
Great, thank you. All right. Right here, everybody. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thanks again.
See ya. Mark or Tom?
Okay, so, board members, I was supposed to mention this one that we're just gonna be, well, we did it in the consent, is that right?
Yes, the C one.
But this is the Sunflower Bicycle Tour. And can you just come for a second and say what it is? We won't take a photo, but just let everyone know what's going on with this one, and then I'll hand this to you.
So, Tina Russo, active transportation planner for Pasco MPO. There's a group of women cyclists that are doing the Coast-to-Cost Trail, which is several trails that encompass that trail. They'll start in Titusville, and they'll make their way into downtown Saint Feet, which is the coast-to-coast, and they will be stopping in Pasco County on April second, spending the night here. And each one of these towns that they're stopping in, they're doing a resolution for safety. It's put on for Bike Florida and USF Cutter Bike Walk Tampa Bay.
Excellent, excellent. So, we welcome them to Pasco County. Here's some resolutions for you. All right. Thank you. Okay, next.
All right. Is anyone here for National Surveyors Week? All right, please come up to the podium. Oh.
I usually do this one, but we can only do one per commissioner, so someone else got the lucky Marianna's doing this, yeah. Look at this.
Nothing's getting surveyed right now.
Nothing's being surveyed.
No work is happening in Pasco County today.
All right. I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution number twenty-two dash zero eight eight, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring March twenty-first through March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, National Surveyors Week in Pasco County. Whereas surveyors play an essential role in Pasco County, they're instrumental in developing our community. Surveyors are needed at any time there is new construction, transportation, or mapping in Pasco County. And whereas surveyors also play an important role in our local government, they're instrumental in defining legal boundaries throughout our community. And whereas the surveyor profession is one of the oldest professions in the United States and has literally shaped our country as we know it today. Surveyors and mappers are among the founding fathers of the United States. In fact, three of the, three of the four men who are eternalized on Mount Rushmore were surveyors. They were instrumental in the formation of the United States' land boundary and property system. And whereas George Washington, the first official county surveyor in the colonies, Thomas Jefferson, Abraham Lincoln, and other former presidents of the United States, served their fellow colonists as surveyors. And whereas the surveying and mapping profession requires special education, training, and knowledge of advanced mathematics, physical and applied sciences, and boundary law. And whereas surveyors and mappers are uniquely licensed to determine and describe land and water boundaries for the management of natural resources and protection of private and public property rights. And whereas the continued advancement in instrumentation have required surveyors and mappers to not only be able to understand and implement the methods of the past, but also to employ cutting-edge technology in finding solutions to meet the challenges of the future. And whereas the citizens of Florida recognize the valuable contributions of the surveying and mapping profession to the history and development of our state. Every day Floridians make important decisions based on the knowledge and experience of licensed professional surveyors and mappers. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby declares March twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two as National Surveyors Week in Pasco County and encourages all citizens to recognize the many contributions and the ongoing dedication of professional surveyors and mappers in our community. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this twenty-second day of March, twenty twenty-two.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Commissioner Mariana?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Boy, I didn't know we had that many surveys around.
Are they all county surveys?
No, we have some private.
Yeah.
I will tell you, there was a, there was a time about a couple of years ago, I was getting some survey work done, and I talked to a gentleman that was working for his dad, had been a surveyor from Virginia for thirty years. His dad's getting ready to retire, he's trying to come down here, and he can't get certified by Florida because he doesn't have a full-year degree to go forward. And I think for the profession, the skills that you guys have is phenomenal, and to be certified, I think if you can focus on what you need to do to get your profession and get your certification should be the way to go rather than the burden of the full-year degree. She worked on it the past couple of years. This year she was closed, I was up there for one committee meeting, and it passed, but it didn't go all the way through. So, if you guys are interested in getting more people to help you guys, because I knew you guys were gonna be slammed, right?
Oh, we are slammed.
So, to help the profession, she's trying to work up there for her, and I support that as well. But thank you for coming out here. I didn't know we had that many surveys coming today, so I'm delighted, so if you would.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners, Madam Chairman. My name is Alex Parns. My middle name is Wolf, friends call me Alex Wolf around here. My team calls me El Jefe, lovingly. First, let me thank you for recognizing National Surveyors Week here in Pasco County. It's a, it's a big time for this profession. The profession of surveying and mapping is very old, historical, and time-honored. Folks that hear me speak and teach classes know me to say it's the second-oldest profession. But from Babylonia to Mesopotamia and ancient Egypt, that did get a laugh. Wow, I didn't think... So, from Babylonia to Mesopotamia to ancient Egypt, the surveyors back then, or they used to be called rope stretchers, they laid out the pharaoh's lands as far as the pharaoh's eyes could discern and built the, laid out the structures, the pyramids, and all the other structures back in ancient Egypt. One of the most intenent, important tenants of this profession is to follow in the footsteps of the original surveyors. That's something that we go by. That's what we do. Well, it's my particular honor, and I think I could speak for my surveying and mapping geomatics team when I say it's their honor as well, to follow in the footsteps of the very first county surveyor of the colonies of the United States, George Washington, who was also the first president, obviously, of the United States. I'm a huge fan, George, George Washington fan. I actually have a George Washington bobblehead on my desk. Truth, my team can verify. Then there's the other fellows on Route Mushroar, the other former presidents. In Florida, this resolution, this small recognition, is particularly pertinent this time. At this point, we are still considered a profession in the eyes of the Supreme Courts of the United States. We sincerely hope it remains that way. A four-year degree is an important piece of that puzzle. We sincerely hope it remains that way, and the future is now uncertain, but that is a discussion for another time and place. Suffice it to say, as your county surveyor for Pasco County, this is a professional service and responsibility my team and I do not take lightly, and it is our honor to serve Pasco County residents and Pasco County government as your county surveyor and your county surveying and mapping division. Thank you for taking the time for recognition of National Surveyors Week in my county, the premier county, Pasco County. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Just to touch on that little bit of history, I'm a big George Washington fan as well. They say it's, he's actually had said, one of the reasons that he really wanted to go fight the British was not so much the Boston Tea Party and the stuff that was going on, but the fact that he had surveyed so much land, wanted to survey more, and the British kept him from going to do more. And he felt there was, the British were holding us back from developing the country out, and that was one of the things he felt was being impinged upon the freedom of Americans that had come over here, so. Yeah, definitely a great leader and great to have your spokesman.
Thank you, thank you. I think our field crews can empathize with that sometimes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jack, you wanna go down and we'll stand back here?
Yeah, let's do a picture. If everyone can come right up in here, the photo stay back. Right up. Right up.
Yeah, quit moving up there.
Thank you.
I'm up here in heels.
Back it up.
One more. Good job, thanks.
Got one out there.
Back it up, back it in.
Okay, you moved again.
Oh.
Another one.
It's like a ninja.
Bobbing and weaving, bobbing and weaving.
Like a good one.
I want my tip on. Oh, man, that's so funny.
Okay, I think we're good. The tall one always being the front.
And you can get it?
I see. All right. I think that's it for the Rs.
Yeah.
I mean, the RS, the RSs.
RSs.
We've got three things going here. So, we are gonna move on to the regular agenda, and I see R fifty-three.
It's been so long since we've seen Mike, we wanted to invite him back again, so.
Good morning, commissioners. It's great to be back in front of you in different circumstances. Mike Napier, Florida Department of Health, Trang Chitico, one oh eight, forty-one Little Road, Newport Ritchie. We're here to talk to you a little bit about COVID, just a little bit, and a little bit more about the health department. Next slide, or well, I guess we got that there. We're gonna talk a little bit about the COVID response. Believe it or not, it's been a little over two years now, and we have a slide or two to talk a little bit about what all happened. But also, what I really wanted, the takeaway from COVID is, is that we wouldn't have been here, standing here today if it wasn't for our community partners. Each of you helping me and the rest of the community identifying supporters, locations, vaccination sites, many of you called at one point in time where, hey, we're not getting our share of vaccine. You called those powers-to-be to make sure we got vaccine here, so. Just gonna talk a little bit about that, and then we're gonna talk a little bit about our, what we're doing going forward. The slide here is a little bit hard to see, but what I really want you to do is there's three years of data here. The blue data, the light blue data, was when COVID first started.
They were excited about your speech.
Yeah, one is glad that, or maybe they're recovering still. So, the first, the small bar graph to the right is the light blue, and that was when COVID started. And if you look in the middle, that light blue is actually when the board here, we made the decision that we were gonna start shutting down businesses, and we were wearing masks, and schools were closed, and that's that first middle blue line, the small blue line, and that goes to the right through the rest of that, that calendar year. The yellow line, which is the next year, which is two thousand and one, kinda tells you a little different story about what happened as far as COVID cases. I also point out that in that yellow line, where you see on the left-hand side, the yellow underneath the taller blue, is when vaccine first became available. As you can see, the yellow line goes through, we had the Delta variant come in, and that's when in the center of the map is when the Delta variant arrived. And you can see the, it took about two months to go through the Delta variant, and then it came down again once people were vaccinated, either got sick or got vaccinated. And then the darker blue, which is on the left-hand side, is the Omicron. And I draw the distinction between the Delta and the Omicron, and the Delta was a longer period of time and not quite so high, whereas the Omicron was highly infectious, but a short period of time. And on that peak period, Pasco County had eighteen hundred, eighteen hundred cases in a single day, with thirty-five percent of the testing that came back was positive. So, one in three people that went and got tested, didn't feel well, was getting tested or coming back positive. So, just trying to keep perspective on where we were, and if you look at the dark blue to the left quarter of the graph, that's where we are today. Like I said, we had seventeen cases and a two-point-eight percent positivity yesterday. A long cry from eighteen hundred and thirty-four hundred, thirty-four percent positivity. As a reminder as well, vaccinations, when we had limited vaccine, the health department was the lead agency for the county on getting vaccinations out to the sites. We had those at Sears and at Saint Leo. Couldn't have been done without partners that I'm gonna talk about in a little bit. And we also have testing sites, I just wanna map those out. Anytime you wanna know where those sites are, if you go to the floridahealth.covidnineteen.gov, they're changing from time to time, you can get that information. The goal here is, is to talk a little bit about what our vaccination rates are. For the state of Florida, we're about seventy percent. In Pasco, we're about sixty-four percent. But I would draw your attention to the graph to the right, which is actually showing that our vulnerable population, sixty and older, are about eighty-five, almost ninety percent, ninety-five percent vaccinated, and that's what the target audience was all along. Your county administrator and I, when we first started talking about vaccination rates, our goal was sixty percent, and so we're at sixty-four percent today, and glad that we're in that position. Kind of the after-action that we talk about locally, we had consistent messaging. Outside of the locally, we all talked amongst ourselves, we tried to have a solid message for our community. The outside factors certainly affected us, but our messaging, I've spoke to every one of you multiple times a week, many times, about where we were at with hospitals, testing, vaccinations, and I can't thank you enough for that level of support, whether it was having to make calls that I couldn't make to those who could get me a vaccine or facilities. The collaboration with the school district, which, where they've got fifty thousand students affected by COVID, the school district setting up a command center there with Mr. Browning and his staff was instrumental in our success. Cooperation with other local entities and municipalities, we had conference calls, they would email me, we set up particular sites. And I just wanna point out also that with a hundred and thirty-two employees at the health department, we hired another seventy-five people to help with COVID, so we nearly halved the amount of people. Now, hiring people is not the hard part, it's training people to make phone calls, how do you do contact tracing? So, it was a learning curve for us to try to train that many people in that short a time. And then the last thing with the county emergency management, I honestly, I couldn't have made it without Andy and his team helping us, because they covered the regional logistics, materiel, staffing, and it was, we couldn't have made it without county EM. A few thank yous that I wanna mention, and if you take a look at the pictures in there, the top-right corner one is at Sears, where I wanna give a shout-out to Eric and his team, my staff, and the people who worked out at that drive-through, couldn't have made it without those tents. It was intense heat, cold, whatever it was, but having them put that out there. But I wanna, as I mentioned, the county management team, emergency management, Bay Care was instrumental. I wanna make sure that Bay Care was instrumental on the testing side. Early on, when we were trying to find tests and where could we get material to test and get the returns back, Bay Care was right there, side-by-side with us at Gulf Elementary, Gulf High School when we first started, and then at Sears. And so, I mentioned the Gulf High School staff that were out there, the principal. The Gulfview Square Mall was helpful in making sure we had a location for a long period of time, that people knew we had parking, we had ability to get people in and out. And lastly, and probably as impressive, to have the Saint Leo University step up with the amount of people and staffing that helped us, and having the drive-through at Saint Leo was, and the fact that they had the parking garage there to allow us to get out of the weather. weather. I know Commissioner Oakley came out and actually did a visit and saw what that operation was. It was pretty impressive with what the school was willing to offer to us. We have in the near future a plaque to be able to, a bronze plaque to actually put on that parking garage to remember, commemorate all that had happened there. So, it was, we're not out of the woods yet entirely. We still hear about COVID, but I think that for right now, I think we're, the Health Department's ready to move on with our, our site's still on COVID, but we're ready to move on, and I'm going to have Trang talk a little bit about what that might look like.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for having us here today. And while COVID has impacted much of our lives in the last couple of years, we are excited to see what's going forward. And this past year, we were able to, with the help of the county, we are able to procure a larger building on the west side of the county using state funds. And we're looking forward to being able to move into that new building next year. At this new building, we will be able to provide a one-stop shop for all of our services, which will be very exciting for our residents. Now, currently, we have five locations in the county, and our new building will consolidate Main Street and Little Road into one larger building where we'll be able to provide the family planning services, immunizations, infectious disease treatment, along with WIC and Healthy Start Services. An added feature in the new building, we've partnered with our premier, our federally-qualified health center, who will be providing dental services in our new building. So, we're really excited about this new building. The Health Department operates on a $14.5 million budget, which 3 million of it is currently COVID funding. We have, as Mike mentioned, about 130 staff, but 25 of those staff is currently working COVID operations at the moment. In the last year, we've provided 180,000 services to the community while seeing about 14,000 clients with all of the services that we provide. And I wanted to take a moment to thank our staff. As Mike mentioned, we could not have done it without them, especially in this last year. So, in December, we took a satisfaction survey, and we're happy to present that 90, over 90% of our staff responded back with positive results. With all the chaos and uncertainty that happened within the last couple of years, our staff at the Health Department was no different. They've endured, you know, being homes, family sickness, friend's sickness, being isolated, quarantined, school closures, all while having to still come into work every day. And so, with communication and compassion, we're able to push through, and we're happy to present our positive satisfaction results now. And we're looking forward to what's to come in the future. Now, beyond COVID, we've also working on some additional activities that I wanted to share with you. A couple of years ago, we received an opioid grant that we were able to partner with our sheriff's office and our school board to provide and enhance some of the programs that they have addressing opioid use in our county. We're also a part of the opioid task force team, preparing a plan and a framework for the upcoming funds to address the opioid use and substance disorders in Pasco County, and we're looking forward to working on those efforts. We've also partnered with our regional county health departments and completed a survey, a community health needs assessment survey, where we will take a look at our tentative top topics in the next upcoming years, which will address access to care, exercise, nutrition and weight, mental health, and mental disorders within the county. And finally, we've completed a protocol for assessing community excellence and environmental health. The department has completed at least three of these surveys in previous years. And in past years, we worked with Parks and Recs to assess residents' use of the parks and why don't they use the parks, and we were able to provide some of the responses there to the Parks and Recs group. A couple of years ago, we did an assessment of the Moon Lake area, and we were able to provide some new equipment to the park in that area. And then recently, we did an assessment to assess the needs in the Holiday area, and we look forward to presenting those results to you. And finally, we are extremely thankful for the relationship that we have with you all and the support that you've given us, especially in the last couple of years. Have any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No. I tell you what, you know, you guys are awesome. You're incredible. You really are. I say I have the honor, but of being chair during the, when this all kicked off, but, you know, it's funny, and then.
I made one, made the worst, man.
You guys, again, were just amazing during this time, and, you know, you and your entire team literally working 24/7. I mean, you still haven't gotten any rest. Maybe one day you will, hopefully soon. But, you know, our family dynamic was interesting because hearing me being a county commissioner and the chair at that time, talking to Mike on a daily basis, and as we know, the Jared Moskowitz and trying to get the vaccines, the tests and things down here. But my wife also was very involved and worked with Trang, not only on the COVID side of things, but she was also the one you talked about, the opioid grant. My wife was the lead for the Pasco County School System on that opioid grant, so they worked very closely together. So, she might, she may have been on the phone with Trang, and I was on the phone with Mike at the same time. But, you know, now she's moved on, and she's teaching at university, but she enjoyed her time she spent with, obviously, working together with you guys too. But, you know, I just wanted to say thank you, you know, so, so very much for everything you do, not just during COVID, but ongoing. You know, the importance of your, of the Florida Department of Health here in Pasco County is extraordinary. I mean, it's beyond, the work you do, again, is beyond on, you know, I don't know how, we can't, again, we just can't thank you enough. You know, I could go on and on. So, very, very much appreciated. And, you know, I think people need to realize too, is that especially your team members and your physicians and your registered nurse, they really do this because they want to. They could go off and make double, triple. Yeah, it's not about the money. By no, by no means is it. They could go off and, especially in this marketplace, make two or three times the amount of money, but you guys are dedicated and your team's dedicated, so thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Oakley.
I can't say thank you enough for all that you and your staff did. It was amazing, the difference it was to be able to work with so closely with the Health Department and work through a lot of issues we're having. Even those cases, and you know, Mike, I'd call you on those cases for some elderly people that were having a hard time getting online and getting their place in line to do it. We even helped communities outside of Pasco coming to St. Leo. That service there was tremendous. And the number you could do in a day was just amazing, how many you did. And actually, you were in the shade all the time, it was pretty hot during some of those times, so. But it worked out. It really worked out great. I was, I was proud to be a part of Pasco County and working with you, the Health Department, and all your staff. Very appreciative of all that. Advan Health stepped out in my area with some seniors also, with some vaccine and all that that really helped the time. And those are very small numbers. You handle large numbers all the time, but those small numbers, just the gratitude and the small numbers you get from senior citizens that couldn't get there, just their gratitude and just that. I mean, you just multiply that by many because you've helped so many people. So, it was a great thing that we stepped forward and did what we did, and I think we were better, and I think you got a better handle on things because we did what we did at the time. So, it was all uncharted ground that we found that you can do. So, but Pasco County's the top of the list, as far as I'm concerned, is in the Health Department area, so thank you.
Commissioner Mariano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mike, I want to say you and your team, the dedication, the time, the performance you put on was phenomenal. From the testing right off the bat, later on, as far as getting the vaccinations done across the board, across the county. The setup you put up with the monoclonal was phenomenal, and I think that was one of the biggest positive things we've ever done to actually save people and save them quickly. So, I want to say, I know it took a lot of time. I know, I mean, my daughter Lauren was actually working with the state at the time on DEM with Kevin Guthrie and all, and she had to be working 75 hours a week. I'm probably, I think you probably were working even more. And the calls you got from all of us, I'm sure just kept on going and going. And much as we all just kind of were probably peppering you for this, that, and the other thing, your performance and your whole team's performance was phenomenal. So, I want to thank you for all that. I'd like to ask you a question too, if we could, for the future coming up. You mentioned about the opioid task force, what's going on? I'm glad you guys are part of that. I think it'd need to be a very big part of that. We've got a new jail that's coming in. We're setting it up where we can actually deal with mental health, drug disorders as well, so I want you guys to stay closely as we kind of develop what we're going to go do to make sure we're going to treat these, treat our citizens the best we can every step of the way.
Sure.
So, thank you, thank you again.
And gosh, what a, what an interesting time to be here, Commissioner. And I'm just really proud of our county, our Health Department, just our administration, all our partners. I thought, I think we were one of the models for the state, not the country, so I'm glad we're getting through it. Not done yet, but we're definitely getting through it, so. I'm actually flying on the day that the mask ordinance or rules stop for airlines, April 18th, I think it is. I haven't decided yet, but I'm probably going to still wear my mask, but I don't have to, so. Thank you so much. We look forward to your move and the next time you come visit us.
Thank you.
Okay. Our, our what?
54. 54, it's the MPUD.
Good morning, Madam Chair. I'm your target of the Pito's Planning and Development Department. Today, I'll present to you the Single Family Residential Lots and MPUD's policy memorandum that was requested of the Board of County Commissioners at the October 26, 2021 BCC meeting, wherein, where at, the board wanted the Planning and Development Department to be directed to address certain issues associated with single-family residential lots in MPUDs specifically. So, so the memo is divided into a number of parts, and so what I'll do is I'll just walk through the memorandum as shown on the slides, or as summarized on the slides here. And then I'll be done with the presentation, and we can have a discussion regarding the proposed policy memorandum. So, part one of the policy memorandum, and let me mention too, that the purpose of the policy memorandum is to disseminate it to the Planning and Development Department staff in order for them to have a unified approach in the negotiations for residential developments through the MPUDs that are applied to the department. So, part one of the memorandum deals with minimum lot width controls, and what part one sets out is that any MPUD may allow 40-foot wide lots. However, there's a 50% threshold that was determined together with industry stakeholders and staff. And what that threshold means is that up to 50% of the lots that are 40 feet wide may be front-loaded, leaving the other half to require rear-loaded or alley-loaded product. And what that will do then is that half of the development will have more green space in the front of the buildings because their driveways and their garages will be to the rear of each lot. And in order for us to facilitate and help the alley-loaded or rear-loaded development because it will require the construction of extra alleys, infrastructure, we are extending the traditional neighborhood design mobility fee incentive to those projects to help offset the costs of the additional infrastructure. Part two of the memo talks about architectural controls, and I've highlighted this one provision here on the slide because that's a question that needs to be posed to the BCC. But if I can make my way through the presentation, then we can return to this question and ask it of each board member, I think that would be useful. So, the policy question that's before the Board of County Commissioners is, are the architectural controls, which include the placement of houses, meaning the type of model or elevation type that can be built to the left and to the right of a proposed home or across the street from a proposed home, or kitty corner to a proposed home? Can the establishment of at least three architectural features that create distinctions and differentiations between the architecture, and also the amount of garages extending more than eight feet beyond the roofline, are those applicable to all single-family residential lots or just 40-foot wide lots? And as an alternative, are, may they be applicable to 40-foot wide lots and 50-foot wide lots? So, that's the policy question that remains on the table following a series of stakeholder discussions with industry stakeholders. Part three of the memorandum talks about the conditions of approval specific to the question of the monotony in architectural controls that I just referenced. During the construction phase, we're going to establish conditions of approval that require quarterly reporting on the part of the developers to demonstrate and illustrate how they are avoiding monotony by instituting these architectural controls. Once construction is done, then the conditions of approval kick in to require homeowners associations to maintain these monotony and architectural feature controls. And HOAs are a typical organization that facilitate the architectural appearances of communities. The conditions of approval will also require that deed restrictions be established on these properties, so in the unfortunate event an HOA goes defunct, there are still deed restrictions placed on the property for proper code enforcement to take place. Part four of the memorandum deals with trees in single-family residential areas. So, these provisions are already in use in some of the most recent MPUDs that have come before the Board of County Commissioners, so we've already kind of pre-tested them in the run-up to this policy memorandum. Importantly outlined in the memorandum is that front-loaded, single-family detached products shall require one lot tree and one street tree in front, in the front yard. Front-loaded, single-family attached with four or fewer units in a townhouse building, for example, will have two trees in the front yard and/or street, and then five or more units, three trees in the front yard and/or street. And there's also provision to require the shade trees to be established on those properties. And then finally, an engineering detail is provided in the memorandum to not require driveway flares to accommodate the spaces between sidewalks and curb edges for tree plantings. Driveway flares are when the driveways flare out to facilitate turning radia. Part five of the memorandum talks about townhouse lot considerations specifically, and the two main provisions there are to limit townhouse buildings to two to eight units per building. The idea there being that we don't want townhouses that are 10, 12, or longer units long. Instead, break those buildings apart and create green spaces between those buildings for, to address the landscaping concerns that were expressed at the October 26 meeting. And then attached in your handout, in your packet, is an exhibit showing an example configuration of how townhouse driveways, front-loaded driveways, can reach towards the street and still provide the necessary green spaces and tree plantings in front of the buildings so that you don't have a sea of, well, not, maybe not a sea, but a large expanse of driveway pavement in the front of a building. Part six of the memorandum is basically direction toward the Planning and Development Department requesting a feasibility white paper to look at residential streets and alleys and see what opportunities there are to optimize the code. And then also, it provides direction with regard to alternative standards, the type of alternative standards we'll support in order to accomplish the provisions and the vision outlined in the, in the policy memorandum. Part seven of the memo is with regard to applicability to MPUDs currently in review. There's a number of exemptions that are identified in the memorandum. Existing MPUDs are being exempted, so if there's already been something that's been approved, if they come in for a modification, this would be, those modifications would be exempt from applicability. a modification, this would be, those modifications will be exempt from applicability from this memo, since a number of planning and financial decisions have already been likely executed by the time a modification comes in. We don't want to disturb or disrupt that. There's also an exemption from part one of the memorandum, which had to do with the 40-foot lot size limitations for the villages of Pasadena Hills, Connected City, the Central Pasco and Plamen Village, Avalon Park West MPUD, and Newport, or Newport Corners. These exemptions are in place because there are already documents that govern the design and density requirements. And there's, in some cases, like in VOPH, there's a financial plan that depends on a certain type of density to be accomplished. So these special areas are being sort of carved out from this memorandum, just from part one of the memorandum. The architectural and tree provisions, et cetera, are still applicable. And then finally, there's an exemption for multifamily, mainly because this memorandum deals with single-family development. But I want to include also multi-unit detached housing, which is basically what, what we've seen in some proposals, where we have a single, large parcel of land that has multiple detached products on it, that is technically classified by the Land Development Code as multifamily, even though it's one family per detached unit that's living on that, on that project. It's probably more commonly been called horizontal apartments, as opposed to vertical apartments. And then the last part of the memorandum is a six-month assessment. So the memorandum talks a lot about conditions of approval being added to MPUDs, how to account for and control for all the things that I've just talked about. It's going to take negotiation and a bit of testing to see the different scenarios that we have to apply these provisions. And so by October, we should be, we should have, we should have a number of negotiations under our belt to, and, and should have been able to test a lot of these conditions of approval in, in a series of situations. And we can make an assessment at that time to see whether or not the provisions work, what needs to be changed, and what can be now added into the Land Development Code as a standard. So having completed the presentation, I'll go back to the last remaining issue before the board. The Planning and Development Department worked closely with industry stakeholders that include land use attorneys, the Tampa Bay Builders Association, and other developers to negotiate this policy memorandum. And we've done, we've been doing that since the February 8 BCC meeting. This is the last item that has been unresolved, so to speak, because it is sort of a policy question. The Board of County Commissioners has not told us in a, in a clear way whether or not they intended, or you all intended, for the architectural controls to be applicable to all single-family residential, or just the 40-foot-wide lot, single-family residential, or the 40-foot-wide and 50-foot-wide lot, single-family residential. And that'll, I'll leave it with that question.
Board members, anyone want to start? Commissioner Oakley?
Okay. I think we determined, we talked about it with the stakeholders there in a meeting, that if you went to larger lots throughout, then the architectural, because you'd be spending more money on a home, the architectural kind of takes care of itself. So you don't necessarily have to tend on, they want it different from the house next door. But on 40-foot lots, it's very important we make sure it's done the right way. But as you get to 60-foot lots and others, people are spending more money on their home, they care about the architectural view, and they don't want what somebody's got next door or across the street. So I think that takes care of itself.
Commissioner Oakley, how would you, someone may want a bigger yard, but the same house. Just because they have a 60-foot-wide lot doesn't mean they're going to pick a larger house.
No, that's right.
So I think it needs to stay with the house, not the lot size.
Yeah, but the fact of it is, if you've got a larger lot and you build your home, you're going to be...
You may or may not build a larger house.
Yeah, you could build the same-sized home. You're just going to pay more attention because you're going to probably put more into that smaller home. And you're going to pay more attention. You don't want your house the same as the one on either side of you, or across the street.
I think it should be generic to the house. I don't care what size it is. It need, I don't think it should only be a house on a 40-foot-wide lot. Otherwise, I mean, you could get a 50-foot lot and say it's a corner lot, it's a little bigger, but then you get a house with no, none of the apartments of architectural, three architectural.
Most of your wider lots are getting bigger houses. I think that's what we see in...
Ms. Mariano? Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I think with the, the smalls, the 40s and the 50s, I think the architectural is, is critical. I think as you get to the bigger ones, generally speaking, I'm not going to have the same color houses with my neighbor. I mean, you could work some neighborhoods, and some neighborhoods are nice, like Heritage Springs. They're all exactly the same color, exactly the same thing.
Right.
But that's probably by their own restrictions. I think with most of the developments, so most people want to have their own controls. They're going to have those different roof styles, et cetera, and probably going to build a different house to, to some degree. So I think there's enough variation there. I think the smaller ones, some of the neighborhoods I've driven in that are on these 40s and 50s, and they just like, it just, it's going to look terrible down the road, to what can happen. So I'm okay with 40s and 50s, but I think that the larger ones will be all right.
I think, I think what you'll end up seeing, if you're, what you're saying is true, is you'll see even more architectural features. And, but I, I think we should keep them to say that they should at least have three of, picked from, they should have a minimum of three, but...
Oh, you mean for all the lots?
Yeah.
A minimum of three.
Why, yeah.
Yeah. Well, our, our thought basically wasn't necessarily that.
I don't think it's an issue.
Our thought was the bigger lots were going to be different anyway. So, and that
But, but what we would be doing is saying you don't have to have, pick from any architectural details, right? If we don't put this on a, if we're going by the lot size and not the structure.
Right. If we go by the lot size and say this is applicable only to the 40-foot-wide lots, then only the 40-foot-wide lots would look at the provisions established in the memo.
And that could happen with the developer, I guess. I, I wouldn't think it would, but yeah. So maybe you do want to have some kind of a, a guidance on architectural, no matter what the size lot is, knowing that the larger lots are going to do it anyway. But put something there that kind of states you will keep in mind to use different architectural views of houses on the larger lots. So, something that forces the issue to be that. Instead of, you get three people, oh, I want the same house. Oh, I want the same look. I want the same. I mean, if you got that, then it would, it wouldn't look as good if, if you kind of put some kind of guidance for that architectural view.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think that happens anyway. So I don't think that's, that we're asking too much to say that you should also have some architectural restrictions on a larger lot.
Yeah.
The industry's not going to object to that because they're going to...
I think on the bigger lots, you're, you're going to get better architectural views and different ones because...
Yeah, I think they'll have more than three.
The people are going to be building a bigger house, a different house, and, and they're going to want it not to be like those across the street. I think that's normal. But we should make sure that they don't just build the same model in those bigger lots. So, and same architectural view.
All right. So there's, there's something that I wanted to talk about here, and that is the driveways and townhomes. And I'm trying to do some research.
Can I show you one more comment to the lot thing?
Yeah, absolutely.
And we'll get to that because I want to talk about that, too.
Right.
You know, one thing I want, I'd like to do is, for those who want to build the larger homes, those are the more desirable homes, are better, I think, for, for long-term for Pasco. I mean, the affordable ones, let's make them look good. And I would like to encourage them to have the larger lots to go through, because I think when you can put more than two cars in a driveway, it's probably a good thing. When you have a bigger lot, it, it provides, I think, for a better tax base and, and better quality of life for kids that are going to live in the neighborhood. So I want to make sure we give them the flexibility to do what they want if they're going to build larger. The, the problem is when you see these smaller lots are so tight and they're identical all the way through, that's the ones that I think are going to really...
And plain.
And plain for down the road. So that's why I think the 40s and 50s, I'm, I'm good to focus on those. I'd love to keep the freedom to encourage them to build the larger lots on the others.
But, but you can still put a smaller house on a 60-foot. It shouldn't be the size of the lot. It should go by what we want as a minimum on any house that's built here in Pasco County. It's not the size of the lot. See what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying.
And, and we're saying this is the minimum.
People getting a bigger lot are going to put a bigger house on it.
Right. So if, if, if they're going to put a bigger house, they're going to put more detail on it? Am I missing something here?
Well, if I might, the memorandum identifies a minimum of three features that establishes, at least from the Planning and Development Departments or the county's perspective, a differentiation between architecture of one house compared to the neighboring house. I think it's true that as you get a larger lot, you'll, it's likely that they'll build a larger house, which will demand additional architectural features. The marketplace will make that demand. I also think that because the threshold is fairly low at three, they'll probably meet that anyway.
I, I agree. So why is it so strenuous to put it in? I mean, I don't think it's any issue, but if we don't have it in, some people are going to dive to the bottom. Sorry. Do we want someone to build a large house with no architectural features? Do we?
No, that's, that's not...
Okay, so let's have a minimum of three.
They all have architectural features.
Let's have a minimum of three. It's, it's not a lot. But let's at least raise the bar from zero to three. I'll understand.
Well...
I think it's going to happen anyway.
I think the market controls it.
But how do you, and how do you enforce...
I can drive you to your neighbor's where it didn't happen.
All right. So let's get to it. How do you enforce it all down the road?
They, they submit a plan.
So let's, let's say 10 years down the road, I'm going to go buy one of these houses with a 60-foot lot. It's got a different look than my neighbor. It's already different enough, and maybe I want to have it my way. But I got to go check with deed restrictions and go see what the guy next door has done, et cetera? It's a difficult road. And if I've got the freedom to, I bought, just bought a single-family house, and I got to go worry about what my guy did? If I like his shutters, even though I'm going to do a different color or whatever, I mean, I just, I just, I think we're going too strong with it.
Yeah, that's all.
Question more? No opinion?
That's not liking.
Calling him out.
I, I, I'm just on the guest list of this party.
Hey, you're not checked out yet.
No, 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 no. Since I didn't...
In a neighborhood that has 60-foot lot.
I'm just, I'm taking it all in. I didn't initiate this, obviously. So I'm, I'm listening to all sides and taking it all in. I had my meeting with staff and obviously the stakeholders, too. But like I said, um, since I didn't start the party, I'm just kind of people watching right now.
All right. Well, I, I just think it's not a high bar to ask for a minimum of three. Am I, are we talking about more than that? More than three? Are we talking about something different than other require, other than requiring at least three architectural features on a house in an MPUD?
It would be whatever the provisions are in the memorandum. So I think the answer to that would be, is it more? No, it's, it would be the same.
So why, so I don't underst, I don't understand the hesitation. It should be the house and not the lot size. Okay. Commissioner?
If we, if we have a development, they're going to give us three or five architectural views for every house in there, right? In normal?
Usually.
Usually that, that would happen.
Usually that's what the marketplace would need.
Right.
You know, they want to serve at least three to five different ideas as, for architectural purposes.
So if that's in the, in the plan for the beginning, and you're required to have different residential views, person coming in with a lot could have a different architectural view than any of those if they choose so on a bigger lot, right? Or would they have to go by the five views that you have architectural agreement on?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, I mean, a developer, if he's, if he's going in there and just sticking up houses alone, he's going to make that change to where architecturally this is that way. But if you have a person wanting to come in and build a custom house on a larger lot, that person's going to maybe want to pick something that's not pre-arranged for an architectural view for all he could have on a certain lot, building a house.
Well, I would say that if you're going to build a custom house, the chances of you different, being different from, from others around you is higher than if you were building a production house.
Right. But, so in, in the sense that she's talking about having a minimal architectural views for all lots.
Yeah.
And when you hit larger lots and people want a certain view, and they want something different, then what, can't they do that with a developer, and they'll still fit in the plan for a different architectural view?
Yeah, most developers, but not all. Most developers will offer choices for the homeowner. You can have a certain model to choose from.
Right.
You can have elevate, different elevations on that model to choose from. Then you can actually choose to incorporate, you know, different features and extensions to the house, three-car garage, you know, outdoor kitchen, that sort of thing, which can influence the architecture of the building. But that's not all builders.
All right, Madam Chair, I'm ready.
Okay, good. Please join in.
So here's a question. Let's talk a little bit, I think it was Commissioner Mariano that brought up a second ago. Maybe it was you, Madam Chair. Oversight, talk about your oversight. I'll ask, probably, this probably has to go to Sally. I would assume that you're going to need additional FTEs to, to manage this as well.
The checklist on the same list.
Good morning, Commissioner Sally Sherman, Assistant County Administrator for Development Services. There's going to have to be, as we've worked with the development community to bring forward any MPUDs that have these lots, we're going to put the onus on them to come up with some type of plans, and you can, that, because we've talked about it, we've been trying to figure out how to get this done, if it's approved, come up with a plan system that they're going to submit what type of design package they're going to allow on different lots. So it may change their marketing strategy with regard to, as they have individuals come in and select a lot, this is the type of house that has to go on that lot. And if you don't want that one, you may have to select another one. I think it would be, it would create a lot of challenges if builders are going to come in and just simply submit a package, and we're going to have staff determine which home was built on the lot adjacent to either side of it. It, I think it's going to be too onerous on us. So we're going to put the onus on them to present the packages as they get them approved.
If I might add to, if I might add to Sally's comments, that would be part of the quarterly reporting that I noted in the, in the memorandum, right? Because the builder is going to make a selection of model and architecture based on, based on the...
But he woke up.
Yeah. Based on the purchase agreement with the homebuyer, in most cases. And so then they have to report back to us to say that when they've, when they've come to such agreements, in this quarter, we sold X amount of houses, and all of the houses were different from each other, and here's the proof.
You know, I, like most of you, I met with a lot of builders, and, and we've been developers, our family. And this is commonly done. I mean, you rarely build the same model next to each other. And, I mean, it's very common that when you have one house, and the person is building the house next door, they change up the features a little bit. They put the door on the right, they put a gable, or a...
Change in the elevation.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that is not anything big to ask of anyone. It's very common.
Again, just my, yeah, my question was, again, where's the oversight? Where's, this is, it sounds to me it's more of a, you know, we trust you.
Yeah.
Type of situation. Pardon me?
Self-reporting from the development community.
In their marketing scheme, I think they're going to have to choose the right ones and allow some changes in elevation so people buying the lot are going to be happy with what they're, they're receiving. So I think the marketplace actually handles some of that.
But, but think about the situation. You're going to develop, and let's say there's 19 homes built, and you've got the 20th one, and you're right in the middle. And one's got some features you like, the other one does have features you like, and you want to, you want to make your decision what you want to build and buy. And now you're, you're stuck in that situation. And I'm, and again, I'm just talking about the 60s, the 40s and 50s I'm good with. But I, I just think we're going to be too much. And then what if the HOA down the road goes defunct? You're going to have it in deed re... You're going to have it in deed restrictions. Who's going to enforce the deed restrictions? Going to fall back on us.
So do you want to do something like this? Just say that, because what I'm really concerned about is that a house has a minimum of three architectural details. And I would say, for the most part, I mean, everyone's going, you would hope everyone would have some, but that take out all the other requirements that are in here about the paint or whatever, but just say, a house in Pasco County must have a minimum of three architectural details. And never mind if it matches your next-door neighbor. Because that's what I'm concerned about.
What's the?
On the 60s. If that's what's holding you up.
We've got a list of the architectural details we're talking about?
Oh, yeah, there's a whole paragraph of, a whole bunch to choose from.
Let's put them up, let's look at them.
You have them on your, on your report, the architectural details?
Yeah, the memorandum can be found online on the Agenda packet information, on the Agenda. Do you have that, Desiree? Yeah. So load them up in just a minute here.
I see we've got one person who was on the call, Clark Cobb is out there. I see Jennifer from TVVA is here as well. Maybe we should hear from them while we're looking at this.
Yeah, but you can pull those up. We normally don't take. Yeah, and I don't, I didn't see, hear any pushback on requiring a minimum of three architectural details from anybody. So that's why I don't think it's an issue to add it to the 60.
I think they do it anyway. I live in a neighborhood right now that's 50-foot lots, and I would think there's at least five different architectural differences on homes, and none of the same homes sit beside each other or across the street.
Didn't he have the presentation?
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I can just get a head nod out there.
Yeah.
Typically, she's talking about different architectural details. If you're going into a, can you move to your left just a little bit? You're good.
Wait, now you're blocking me from the head nod.
Typically, when you go out and, when you're going into a new community and you're looking, like Madam Chair stated about different architectural details, when you see that listing, it's typically listed as different elevations. They call it elevation.
Right.
Am I correct on that? And yes, you do have those typically in most neighborhoods, especially these master-planning communities, yes, you do have choices, right, of those different elevations. But two, I don't know what the policy, that's up to the chair if she allows somebody from the audience to speak, so that's up to her.
Yeah, and I don't mind allowing them to speak.
Okay, then come on up.
But look at the paragraph here. We're talking about the style of the garage door, a shutter, and a little bit of brick, you know, versus, I mean, brick, stone, stucco, hardy plank. I mean, there's so many to choose from. I don't think it's ever going to be an issue, but we should at least have three details. Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jennifer Mottzinger, representing the Tampa Bay Builders Association. The conversation was had with the stakeholders and the staff, and it was in-depth. The real issue that we were concerned about is the fact that this kind of already takes care of itself, and so it puts a lot more pressure on the staff, and essentially you're kind of doing double work. So you're, the staff is already reviewing the plans in the process, and then they're doing this extra layer, which they've already kind of done, and because the bigger lots have all of the bells and whistles that you guys like anyway, why regulate something to regulate it just for the sake of the regulation to regulate? That's a real simplified summary of the lengthy discussion, but Chairman, to your point, of course, we understand, generally speaking, you want a better product in Pasco County, and that's what we're trying to deliver for you.
That's the goal. But do you think that having different rules for different-sized lots makes it more confusing for staff? Shouldn't it be consistent across a 40, 50, or 60? Because now they're going to have to say, oh, I'm looking at a 60, not a 50, so the rules are different. So I think it makes it harder for staff.
Madam Chairman, if I might, we were tasked with dealing with a 40-foot lot issue and townhouse issues, and so we were dealing with those issues with MPUDs, and there was discussion with the stakeholders about applying the architectural features to 50-foot lots. And again, there's some similarity in building type on those lots, and so we don't deny that we should be stepping up those issues, but I think we're trying to avoid creating a bigger paperwork issue for the county and the building community going on for forever on lots that are really not a problem. The perceived problem was 40-foot lots. We broadened it to 50. We just don't want to have to keep going on this forever and ever. And I'd say this, I think you said you had something you wanted to discuss about townhouses. The way Terry has designed this memo, remember, this is to apply and give staff direction on MPUDs. They're going to, we're going to come back and look at this again in six months. If there's something else we need to look at, if it's a problem in six months, we'll bring it up then. But I had worked really hard with our different stakeholders to reach a consensus on today's stuff, and I really would prefer not to go beyond that for today. Maybe the next round. That's my thought on it.
Well, what Clark's referring to, because I let him know ahead of time that, and I had my meeting last week, and after my meeting, we continued with our discussion about the width of driveways for single-car garages, and then I made some phone calls and got more affirmation that we may not want to be allowing a two-car driveway for a single-car garage. So I'm trying to do my research. I'm trying to do my research to see what other counties do, but, and can you show that last picture I sent you that shows a two-car driveway with a single-car garage?
Madam Chair, before we get to that, can I dive into this just one more?
Sure, sure, sure. Can you put that up?
So Jennifer, Clark, whoever, when someone's building a new house or buying a new house, there's a whole list of things to pick from, correct? Do you want this? Do you want this? Do you want this? If there's 30 items on that list, the chances of people picking 27 out of 30 the same, probably slim to none. So there's going to be some differences built in anyway on these, and again, I'm going to the 60-footers. You're not going to build the same house side by side anyway. And I think if someone sees it, they may shift their colors even at some point in time, but.
Sure, sure. And remember, folks, we are still living in supply chain issue world. So I know, I have some friends that just built homes in the last year, and somebody couldn't get stone, so they had to go to a different facade, and they couldn't get this, so they had to go with that. So building in that flexibility, I mean, just think about just that item itself, going back to staff saying, sorry, we're out of stone, we're not going to get stone for another 16 months, what can we do here? Those are the conversations that we were having that led us to where we are now.
Okay, so I guess I'm the only one that wants every house to have an architectural detail. But, you know, I studied interior and design college, and that's where I come from.
I think we all want it.
I'll move on from that.
I think they're going to have.
But I will send you some, I'm going to show you some pictures of some houses that we have.
And Madam Chair.
That have no architectural detail. Chris.
And I was going to ask if, is there a specific neighborhood or a specific development or a specific area that you don't want to see repeated?
Well, I'm going to show you some pictures, but I'll move on from that one. I'm not going to beat a dead horse. But I want to talk to you about driveways. So where's the picture? I sent it to you. I sent you two. One's a video, actually, and one, oh, no, I sent you two pictures. No, I took a picture of a video. Let's see here. Dan Viles, Dan Viles. Yeah. Well, I don't know how else to do it. I don't know them. I don't know how to get it to them. Yeah. But the second one is the one I want, that's Union Park. It's, because I was trying to find, I was trying to do research on townhomes and driveways, and it's very hard to do. I mostly got ads on how to do a driveway.
So it's, they're both in process. Probably go to China and back to get from my computer to her computer.
Okay. So what I was thinking for today was to just take out the driveway with discussion today and bring it back, bring it back. And we can do it as an amendment to this memo or whatever? Does that work?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think, let me, for the other board members, I'm not sure they know what you're talking about, so let me try to explain. I think Commissioner Starkey is bringing up an issue whether it's appropriate to have two-car-wide driveways where you have a single-car garage. And some builders do that, and part of what's happening with these standards is there will be so many landscaping requirements in the front yard that we'll have to alternate the ones who want two-car-wide stalls, if you will, and one to fit all the trees in. So I personally think the issue will solve itself. Having said that, this has a six-month period for us to look at this. I understand the chairman's concerned about it, and I'd prefer that we keep talking with staff and we'll speak individually with board members, and if something needs to be addressed, we can address it then. I do know, and I would say for the board's member, for the board's benefit, there are several builders that do this, and they're responding to market demands. So I haven't had enough of a conversation with all of them to just take a position one way or the other, other than to tell you, I think it would be problematic if we don't discuss it further. So I prefer to have that opportunity.
Well, that's why I was going to carve it out and bring it back.
Well, there's nothing we're doing today that says you can or cannot do that. So my point is, the next round would address that issue, which I think is what you're trying to do.
Commissioner Mariano?
Yes, Madam Chair. I mean, if you look at, neighborhoods are going to evolve over time too, and that's what I think we're concerned about, these standards, and that's why I think it's so critical to put them in, especially the smaller lots. If you drive down to Embassy Park, Regency Park, take a look, that was senior communities' homes built for what, seven grand or something, they said, way back when in the 60s when they first coming down. And you've got now families that have moved in there, and instead of having two cars in the driveway, maybe one in the garage, which is full because you've got stuff, and a lot of those get converted, you get them parking in the dirt, the grass, et cetera, and it just, to me, destroys the quality of what the neighborhood is. So my daughters lived in a place like that up in Orlando when they were both at UCF and Valencia, and there's like, you get one garage, two, and let's say you got three girls living in there. One's in the street, one's in the garage, and the other one's going to go try to find a spot. And the moving around, et cetera, was very, very difficult across the board if you didn't have plenty of spots around for extra.
Well, that brings up my next point, and that is that, and when I first got elected, I had to deal with this, and I'm trying to pull up a map here to see if I can take a shot of it, but behind Trinity Town Center, there was a townhome product built, and the residents were going at it because there was no place for them to park. So, and they had, and so we didn't have any, they had a few ancillary parking spaces, like if you have a guest come, but if you have two adults and a teenager, you know, they were all parking halfway into the street. So I just think a townhome, they need to have other parking spaces besides your driveway. I mean, you cannot concrete, I just think this, you cannot concrete the whole front. That's just not what we want. There needs to be other parking spaces in the community if you're going to have this kind of product. And what that ratio is, I don't know. I'm sure that other counties and other communities have rules on that, but we need to have some too. So we need to have more parking spaces.
Again, I appreciate the comments. Today, the goal was just to help better beautify and deal with landscaping on the frontage and with the monotony controls, so we're stepping up our game on those initial issues. We'll continue having this conversation about, because the tension, I hear Commissioner Mariano on one hand is saying, well, it's better to have more available parking if you can on the lot, but on the other hand, I think he's also realizing that we've got to keep the landscaping out front too, so there's a natural tension there. So let us keep working on it. I would tell you all, there's a lot of, there's a lot of variability in product among different builders, and then there's also a lot of variability between the lot sizes and, you know, varying them between a two-stall and a one-stall, and a two-stall and a one-stall to make it all fit, and the engineers have to sit down and tell us what will fit. So I will continue the conversation and we'll continue be engaged with our engineering folks and try to come up with something that works for all.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
In the definition of the shade tree, one of the things we had with some of the neighborhoods that, I think Ballentry comes to mind, where they put shade trees next to the sidewalk and ruin the sidewalk. We see it all over the county now. I want to make sure we're not be locked into having that type of tree go in there. I mean, a palm tree, you can put that down, you don't have a root.
Right tree for the right place.
So.
What we determined in this process is there's newer standards in the site development criteria and in the notes that require root barriers around those concrete features and other things, so that hopefully that won't happen in the future. We didn't have that until the last year or so.
As long as you think it'll be effective.
Yeah, that's, the engineers tell me they are. They keep the roots from going out wide and blowing the sidewalk up.
Okay.
Thank you. We appreciate everybody's input on it, and we'll continue working together.
I thought I had another photo for you, but just since you already have it in there, can you put up that other photo? This is actually from Spokane, Washington. This is a rear-loaded multifamily product. This is the driveway, this is the alley, and this is what their alleys look like for this rear-loaded product. I have some more pictures from that development. It's outstanding.
Madam Chair, where's that at? Where'd you say?
This is Spokane, Washington. You can see another multifamily product is down at the end of the driveway, end of the alley. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. A question for you, Terry. Some of the standards and some of the research that you did came from the city of Zephyr Hills? Is that correct?
Yes.
What do they require on townhomes?
In terms of?
Driveways.
The driveway issue wasn't one part of the Zephyr Hills research that I did. The Zephyr Hills research that I did had to do with the architectural features controls and also the, some of the lot size concepts.
And where, how did they do the architectural controls? Is it?
Well, the architectural controls that are in the memorandum are basically variations or iterations on the Zephyr Hills code itself. So we've borrowed quite a bit from the Zephyr Hills code in that sense. As far as the townhouses go, that was a logistical conversation between staff and the stakeholders and some of the engineering groups that do frequent work in the county, where we tried to balance the discussion that you were just having, the pavement versus green space issue, and what's the best way to go about doing that? And we had an exhibit as part of the memorandum that only showed an example of what you can do to create green spaces on a townhouse site. And that's where the whole driveway discussion was emanating from.
Okay. Okay, so do we take action on this? Okay. All right, are you guys wanting to leave the driveways as they are now and revisit it later?
Yep.
All right, so let's get a motion. Need a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion if we leave it as right now and we'll revisit this in the future. Do we need to give a certain date or?
No, you're going to make a motion on this item.
Confirm the proposed language of the attached policy memorandum and direct planning and development to begin implementation of the policy guidance.
I'm going to be in brack the driveways, but I'm going to do my research. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Madam Chair? There was a question that you needed to answer, is to, I don't know, I think in the memo, it still had questions whether this applied to the 40s.
I think the chair dropped the 60-foot discussion. I mean, that's the way I took the consensus, but yeah.
I'm good. I'm good.
Okay, R 55.
I could still say, good morning. Marcie Esberg, Director of Community Development. I'm joined today with Don Anderson, the CEO of the Coalition for the Homeless of Pasco County. We're here to give you an overview and an update of our county's homeless services system of care. So we'll start with talking a little bit about how things are set up, and this is, you've probably seen this before, but Pasco County is one of 400 or so continuum of cares across the country, and we compete financially for. And we compete financially for funding around the country. We're comprised of 21 members, all sectors of our leadership council. And we have some of them with us today, if you could stand, be part of our leadership council, who have been elected to serve. I have been the chair, thank you very much for your service. I've been the chair for, I'm going into my third year. And as part of the COC, we have three areas that we work very closely on, and they involve our outreach to our homeless neighbors, our coordinated entry to get people into our system of care, and different special projects that we have. In addition to how the COC is set up with, we have a lead agency, and this is all designated by HUD. And the Coalition for the Homeless is our lead agency. And Don, if you could talk about how that's organized?
Good morning, Commissioners, County Staff. The Coalition for the Homeless of Pasco County is a 501(c)(3). We operate with a Board of Directors of seven individuals. And as Marcy said, we are selected by the COC to be the collaborative partner, the lead agency with relation to HUD. And those responsibilities that come with that include management of the HMIS system, the Homeless Management Information System, as well as the pit count, the point in time. And enact as the administrative body for the COC as well. We're also responsible for making application to HUD for their notice of funding opportunity. And we do that each year on behalf of the COC, under their direction and authority and guidance.
So the COC's mission is to make homelessness rare, brief, and nonrecurring in the county. We do that with a systematic approach, very data-driven, to ending homelessness. And today, we're going to explain the system to you and tell you about the successes that we've had the past two years. Don?
HUD demands many things of us as a continuum of care and the lead agency. And in particular, it's to establish a housing response crisis system, which effectively is, starts with outreach, where we identify the individuals and the families that are homeless. We evaluate them with a standard tool. And then they go to what is referred to as a by-name list, BY hyphen name. And the individuals and the families on that by-name list have all been evaluated by the same tool. So they are ranked in order of who's at the greatest risk of harm on the streets, in the woods. And so it starts with the outreach teams, which we have two that we fund here in the area. Metropolitan Ministries, the Brigade, and the Sword in the Spoon. As part of that outreach and determination of who's in need of services, we then move to what we refer to as prevention and diversion. Prevention can be those who are at risk of homelessness. Diversion is something that we use to address individuals and families that are here in the area that are homeless, but yet they arrived here from another location, probably defined circumstances different than what they had anticipated and expected. And oftentimes, we're able to divert them if we can validate that there is a location somewhere where they have a bed and services available to them. We will then get that individual or family to those resources. The other steps here, emergency shelter. We have limited shelter beds here in the county. We have several agencies that do provide services, but by and large, we use motels as our emergency shelter. And we employ those when we encounter individuals and families that may have medical needs, maybe elderly. There may be extenuating circumstances that put them at great risk. And so we will put them into a motel while we work with them to transition them into housing. And then there are really two types of housing that are funded, and we have programs for. One is called rapid rehousing. Generally speaking, that's for individuals that have hit a blip in the map. They were probably employed, had housing, maybe due to COVID, any number of reasons. They find themselves unemployed. They generally spend an inordinate amount of money on their housing, sometimes 70, 80, 90% of their income, which puts them at risk for homelessness. And so those are individuals and families that we can get back on their feet quickly by assisting them with first, last, and security deposit. And then finally, we have permanent supportive housing, which is, as it states, it's really an opportunity to take individuals and families that really don't have a path to regain the income and the status and position to be permanently housed. So it affords us an opportunity, although the funds are limited, to provide housing supplemental to them for up to 12 to 24 months. But again, those monies oftentimes are very limited in what we have available. But all of these things work together to provide a very systematic approach so that everyone is treated the same, evaluated with the same standard, determine who's at the greatest risk, put them at the top of the list to be housed. And that's how we operate. And we try to close off any doors that would preclude someone from going through the entire system.
So as I said, this is a very data-driven approach. And so I want to go over some of the numbers that we know about homelessness in Pasco County. These are our point-in-time count numbers for 20 and 21. And what's important about these numbers are these aren't merely anecdotal. We drove down the street, what did we see? We drove into a neighborhood, what did we see? These are, these are actual counted numbers. And you'll see that from 20 and 20, and both in 20 and 21, we have a high percentage of singles, adults that are not in families. And in 2021, well, in 2020, we had 76% were singles. And in 2021, 82% were singles. So that percentage, those circle numbers are important as we go forward because we use the information and the data to shape policy and also shape how we fund or what we fund activities. So the next two slides, I want to credit finding this information to County Administrator Biles, who said, "Marcy, can you find this information for other counties?" And so went to the Florida Housing Coalition, who we work with extensively. And they provided this information, and this is based on 2020 data. So you're going to see three charts. And the three charts, I've compared how Pasco County stands as compared to similar counties around us, their COCs. So it's not by county, it's by COCs. So we have, in the first one, the comparison of the percentage of our unsheltered, where Pasco County is the highest among the three surrounding counties, St. Petersburg COC, Pinellas County, Tampa Hillsborough COC, and then to the north of us, Citrus Lake, Hernando, and Sumter County. So we have the highest number of unsheltered. Then the next one, we also see that we have the highest number of chronic homeless. And chronic homeless are those that have been homeless for a very long time in addition to having disability. So that, those would be our longer-term, most vulnerable people. And then the next slide is homeless per capita. And again, you see, this one, we weren't number one, which is, but we are the second highest compared to the St. Petersburg, Clearwater, Pinellas County COC. So I think this also, again, data driving why we do what we do and what we've done so far. So I came back, I came to you a little over, not quite two years ago, in September of 2020. And you approved a plan for us to rehouse 225 of our homeless neighbors in 180 days. We wanted to take some that were unsheltered elderly, some that were unsheltered but not elderly, unsheltered chronically homeless, and families. And we were using about $4 million for, from the Emergency Solutions Grant. And this was a plan that you approved. And what I want to show you is what we did with the funding and what we accomplished. So we accomplished this based on some principles. So we look at data and we look at best practices. And the first was mentioned already by Don, that it's a coordinated entry system. So everybody gets a standard assessment and comes through one door. It's not necessarily a physical door, but it's one system that they're coming through. We triage the people, so we help the highest needs first. This is a very common practice. It happens in emergency rooms. It happens when we assess our seniors. It's a very common practice. And so we have also employed that. And then we have a housing-first philosophy, meaning we take people straight from the streets and the encampments and put them into houses and into housing, rather than this latter approach where they go into emergency shelter and then perhaps in transitional housing, and they have to earn their way through the various steps. And then the other, the other principle, best practice, is that clients have a choice in their housing and also in their services. So based on this, I'm going to, we're going to be sharing actually three to four very, very successful achievements that we've had. The first is the achievements on our housing surge. We said we were going to house 225 people in 180 days. We did not do it in 180 days, but we did house 254 households, 56 families, 86 children, 198 singles, 368 total individuals, 30 elderly. And we did that in one year. Thank you very much for your support and for the leadership of the COC. People in the middle of a pandemic, this is what was done. In addition to this, and I don't have a slide for it, but we also created 14 new permanent supportive housing beds at, with our partner agency, St. Vincent de Paul. We purchased and renovated eight multifamily units. Commissioner Fitzpatrick, you were there at the grand opening. We created 14 new permanent supportive housing beds. We used Community Development Block Grant, coronavirus funds, and ship funds. And we had people that strictly came right off the street. I met Joe, who 20 years was in, lived in the woods. And he said to me in a meeting we had recently that it was the first time that he thought he would ever have a microwave and a refrigerator. And no, he didn't use his dishwasher yet because he only had one fork, one spoon, and one bowl, and he didn't need to use the dishwasher.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So in addition to housing all these people and building new housing, we also opened up a family shelter.
Thanks, Marcy. And I'd like to start, two points. Number one is to gratefully acknowledge the Board of County Commissioners in the county and the citizens of Pasco to fund the renovations to the old Boys and Girls Club on Youth Lane. And we do have an open house planned. You'll be receiving invitations for Wednesday, April 13th, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And we'd like to give each of you an opportunity to speak and address particularly the press that'll be there. As you know, it's the old Boys and Girls Club. It was county-owned and funded the renovations to the two buildings. I believe all of you have seen it, and in fact, it's nine separate rooms with a large common area. It's been very successful. The primary objective here is get these families housed as quickly as possible. We don't want to warehouse them at the family shelter. Rather, we want them to be housed as quickly as we can. We chose some experienced individuals in an organization to run the shelter. We went out with an RFP. The winning agency is Catholic Charities. And they have vast experience and have done a very admirable job of getting this up off the ground. And the shelter actually opened on October 20th. And the next slide, then. I won't read all of this, but you'll get some idea here. The residents that we've had in the shelter have varied tremendously. It's been a single mom to grandparents with children. It's been absolutely remarkable. We have actually served 41 children at this site. Actually, it's a few more than that.
Since October.
Since October. And the next slide will give you an indication of the success that we've had. 18 families have been served since opening. There was some interruption to services because of COVID, where we had to suspend intakes, and we had a couple of vacant rooms, but we've passed that. Six families have successfully transitioned to permanent housing. One family via Section 8. One family discharging to permanent housing in New York State, part of a diversion plan. We use our, we have 104 emergency housing vouchers. We've started to use those for the families that are in the shelter. Four families exited and moved in with other family support. And we have several families currently in line to be engaged in the shelter. I would paint it as enormously successful. We've encountered a great many bumps in the road, but to the recognition of Catholic charities and the coalition staff, I think it's been extremely successful. It would be my hope that at some point in the future, we can do a similar program and services on the east side. It's very difficult for a family if they are on the east side. While they are homeless, many times they have tentacles into the community, maybe job, children going to a particular school. It's really a hardship to expect them to come to this side of the county. So given the success of this and the open house, when you see the operation and what we've really been able to achieve, I hope it's something that you'll support in the future.
So we've explained to you that we've housed people, that we've built housing, that we've had a successful shelter. I do also want to mention that we compete, as I said, we compete around the country for funding. And we've just recently received our funding. And I'm very proud to say that the COC has doubled the amount of funding that they get from 2018 to now, from $800,000 to $1.7 million that's going out to the community. So again, I want to say that this is the most movement, the most achievement, the most success that we have seen when it comes to homeless initiatives, probably in over a decade, if not longer. But it is not over. We're moving forward. We just completed a GAPS analysis. I will go into it a little bit more. We have federal and state funding.
Should we bring her back maybe after some of the public hearings today?
I hate to make her come back. So we're well into the lunch hour. I don't have a meeting. Does anyone else?
Well, Commissioner Moore does with us.
Yeah, no, Commissioner Moore's going.
There's two slides left.
How much longer do you have?
Three more slides?
I know, but I got a lot, I got questions, too, so.
Well, board members, do you want her to come back and stop now for the lunch hour? It's 12:08, or do you want to continue? I'm fine to continue, but.
I do have questions as well.
I have a little bit to continue, to finish.
Marcy?
Three more slides.
Yeah, but they have questions.
I mean, minutes.
You have a couple of items this afternoon that may take a while.
If you're all right, let's let her finish.
And then maybe have him come back. I'll have some questions I'll ask, but.
Okay, well, let's try, let's try and see if we can be done by 12:15.
We do have, and you will see this in the future, we've gotten about $4.5 million of home American Rescue Plan money, which is specifically for housing the homeless, and that will come to you, as well as a coordinated entry study. The slide says, since 10-1, 49 households have been housed. But it's actually 59 households, so it's been updated. I do want to just mention the key findings of our GAPS analysis. And I said, to note those circles, families represent under 20% of our homeless population, but 49% of our beds are dedicated to families. Half the beds of the COC are dedicated to veterans and survivors of domestic violence. And remember, you saw 80% of our homeless are single adults. And while overflow congregant, non-congregant shelter beds were 100% filled, remaining shelter beds were utilized at 50%. So there are some recommendations that have come out of our GAPS analysis. And I want to mention those for individual homelessness, to increase the resources for individuals, for housing single adults. For chronic homelessness, dedicate permanent supportive housing to individuals and ensure that there are supportive services. that there are supportive services and deeply affordable housing. Decrease the number, the length of time for people that are experiencing homelessness, and especially, the study found that the longest path to housing was for those that were in shelters. So we want to make sure that our shelters become housing-focused and housing-first. And then going on to domestic violence, it's increasing around the country to make sure that there's resources, and we did just receive a grant for over $300,000 for domestic violence programs. And affordable housing, we will be using the home ARP funding for affordable housing initiatives for the homeless. So that does conclude the presentation, and Don and I are happy to answer any questions.
All right, and before we get into questions, I just want to let you know, and I don't know if you've seen it yet, but I've had two blasts here, that Mackenzie Scott, I think she's the Bezos ex-wife, I think that's her last name. Anyway, she just gave $11 million to West Pasco Habitat. Commissioner Mariano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Don, a couple of years ago, I asked you for a point-in-time count. I wanted to see who was from Pasco County and who's not. I've never got any information on that. Now that you've got two more years behind you, I'd like to see how many of these people are from Pasco County and how many have been bused in from somewhere else.
We did, Commissioner, add that question to surveys that we were doing, so I can get back to you with that information. I apologize.
That's all right. I'd like to share it with the board as well. You know, I'm glad we're doing the housing first, but I'm a little concerned, what's going to happen when the money runs out? These people are in homes. What are we going to do in two years when there's not the cares money, there's other money's not available? How are these people going to be making on their own? Have you looked at all that? And how do you think the success rate's going to be?
Yeah, so when people get into housing, we are able to, as Don said, help them for 12, 24 months, but we do have other resources. We have what's called tenant-based rental assistance, which is funding from another stream. We have the emergency housing vouchers. We work very closely with the housing authority. So they have those 24 months to begin to place them into other programs. They also, like what's happening in Rosely Rendu, people are going through folk rehab and getting jobs. So we are, and we'll have that connection to AM Skills. So they have those services that will help them to transition into housing and other services and other funding as they need it.
You know, you mentioned Metropolitan Ministries and Sword in the Spoon. I didn't hear you mention anything as far as the Rope Center goes.
Oh, no, I was referring exclusively to outreach efforts. People that are on the streets with notebooks, PCs, meeting with the homeless, whether they be in the woods or on the streets.
And that's the Brigade from Metropolitan Ministries.
Right. And so it was just with reference to outreach efforts.
Okay. One of the things that the Rope Center, we had done for them a few years back, was we built a building for them on Rhodes Road, right off US 19. It houses 20 males, 20 females, all in a bunk bed situation. Okay, so they've got land to the side of it where they could actually build another structure like that. And this could be more catered to ladies on their own?
I think we need men.
To that situation? Well, what that would do is you build that structure over there, you could put 20 more men in the other facility, because it's not always full that way, and help the ladies. And it might even accommodate, I really like the buildings designed in Metropolitan Ministries, where sometimes you can, a small little space, you can actually put a little family in there. That type of thing may fit there as well, to be looked at. I know they're going to be coming to you, I think they've got like another day or two before cutoff, as far as like applying. Yeah, so I think it's, I mean, there's an infrastructure already in place, there's a group that's already running it, that's doing it, that's doing, I think, a great job.
Yes.
They do take some chronic folks that can't go on.
Absolutely.
And they still keep them there. They don't kick them out.
We're in communication with Sue. She does a fantastic job with her clientele, and we support them as we can financially as well.
Okay. All right, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Yep, Madam Chair.
Yep.
With the Rope Center, I would like to see if they can expand their hours, or do they have someone there that's there full-time, or if someone gets called, that they don't have to just go there Monday, Wednesday, or Friday morning? Because there are elderly and disabled people out on the streets, and I would like to see them to make sure we can get them into housing. I know you guys have put hotel vouchers and everything like that, but if we have these resources with the Rope Center and other connections, then we should be, I would like to see them being utilized more first.
I will say that when we contact Sue, if we have a particular, as I did yesterday with an elderly gentleman, she's very quick to respond and willing to work outside of those hours if they're able to.
Okay. Also, I know we're doubled compared to St. Penellas County for our percent for homeless population unsheltered, so I'd like to see what we can do and what are they doing differently? And I know they have a ground zero, so if we can get them into a facility, instead of just putting them right into a hotel, we can bring them to a ground zero, a base location.
Okay. Are you referring to something like the Safe Harbor that's run by the sheriff in Pinellas? It's a 300-bed?
There's a few of them out there.
Yeah. Is that what you're referring to, Commissioner?
Yes.
Yeah, well, every time I brought that up, nobody here wants that here, right? That's not the solution, so. But we do need solutions. I would, I would very much like to see a Boys and Girls Club-type family shelter on your side. I think that would be great, if we could look for, can your money be used for something like that over there?
It could be used for, from the Community Development Block Grant, just like that's what we used. It was $1.2 million of Community Development Block Grant money.
Hopefully, someone's applying over there, or someone's doing it. Okay, it's past 12:15, so I got to let everybody go. Great job. And maybe this money from Habitat, the $11 million, can help people here in our county.
And you mentioned real quick about location. It's definitely going to be finding the good location of where to put these centers as well.
Madam Chair? Yeah, so with Habitat, maybe that would open up the door to go take a look at that Leisure Lane project again, to go forward. And by the way, I want to thank you, Don, when we were clearing out that last section down there that had to be done, was a major job by our team. Thank you for going out there, trying to reach out to those people one-on-one to try to get them services, so thank you for that.
The hotel that you were going to buy, the motel, that didn't happen?
No, a developer came in with a better offer.
Those pesky developers.
So we're, this is being broadcast, so we are interested in buying a hotel or motel or a multifamily unit, so we have money.
And why can't we build?
Well, we can do that, too. It just takes longer.
It just will take longer, yeah.
It takes longer, and we can't do it as cheaply as the development community.
So just, you know, the Rosely Rendu property, I put on beds for $75,000 apiece, which is remarkable. A unit was $135,000.
One final comment, if I may. I'd like to acknowledge Thomas O'Connor Bruno, our Chief Operating Officer, and Jennifer Watts, who's in charge of our service delivery. And finally, I have to say something about Marcy. She came in here, and it was plug and play. She brought experience and vitality to, and we've actually changed the structure of the COC and the Coalition to reflect really what is ideal, and we have a leadership team under Marcy that's really paving the path for us, and we would not be where we are today if it weren't for her involvement. I just so appreciate what she's done.
All right, well, we've kept everyone, 20 minutes passed, so thank you very much.
Thank you for all you did.
What's time?